Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Eastline Board of Education for September 13th, 2021. As I log up, I'd like to call meeting to order. And for everyone who's arrived, please rise and join myself and Dan Cunningham. I'm a pleasure to be here.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, the board would be glad to hear any public comment from anyone who has it and has requested to make public comment. I think we have one, right?
Yeah. I don't know if there's anybody in the audience.
Anybody else in the audience that wants to address the board? Okay. So.
So Jackie, I think we have one or two public comments that were submitted?
Yes, two from Mr. and Mrs. Borelli. We're on Zoom.
And again, we're still operating under the three-minute time constraint. So I know it's a short amount of time, but please adhere to that as we continue. Hey.
Mr. Borelli?
Am I on?
You are.
All right.
Hi there. Go ahead.
Okay, am I on? All right. My name is Matthew Borelli. I live at 15 Indian Road, Niantic, Connecticut. I am now a write-in candidate for the Board of Education. Since we are coming up to election season, I wondered, board members, if you would put your name on this population. As a board member of the Eastline Public Schools, I support the DEI policy that we are presenting for the following reasons. I believe the reason for the disparity in educational achievement between black and white students is due to racial animus. I believe our present system uses white supremacy as its guide. I believe the appropriate response to remediate this gap is to provide the students with more diverse teaching staff. I believe that our staff should reflect the community it deserves proportionately. Believe that there are clear differences between races and cultures. That there is a proven documentation that shows there is heterogeneity between races, but universal homogeneity within a race. Then, in the best interest of the children, we must include members of colors of all levels. We can find that, we can find a single member of color who can ably and honestly represent their entire race. We believe that the diversity effort has been thwarted purposely by white standards that prevent black people from achieving the qualifications to participate. We believe that this is done purposely to oppress black participation. That in order to achieve the goal of diversity, it must be through the avenue of equity, not equality. I believe that in the lowering of standards to allow any member of color to any position based on race and not on qualifications set by white supremacist government, as in the Assistant Superintendent Cardona, now Secretary of Education. That a white person cannot truly understand a black, yellow, brown person. Only a person of similar color can. To achieve true equity, we must operate as a separate but equal institution. That we have in our curriculum, in our teaching staff, and in our administration, built-in racial animus, misunderstandings, and biases that prevent our children of color from learning and from feeling included. And that it is only through the implementation of our DEI policy that we can give our students of color a free, appropriate education. For you to be able to continue to support your DEI policy, you should be able to publicly clear that you believe all of the above. I don't believe you can because you have not been exposed to many of these arguments. I don't believe that you are bad people. But I do believe you are not well enough educated to continue. You have not studied diverse perspectives enough and have not been provided with sufficient evidence to support perspectives other than the cohort-based theories that drive your policy. I would ask that you look at this important matter as you would ask our kids to do critically, weighing both sides of the issue rather than just being persuaded by a one-sided sales pitch. I thank you for your time. I'm available, and I will see you on the campaign trail.
Thank you, Matt. Anybody else wanted to?
My wife.
Yes. Yep. Andrea?
Hi, my name is Linda, and Andrea asked me to read the letter that she wrote. "Good evening. My name is Andrea Borelli. I live at 15 Indian Mill Road, Niantic, Connecticut. I retired in 2002 after 35 years of teaching in Hartford and South Windsor. I consider myself a devoted, well-educated, and a well-trained teacher. I have three degrees, and I've earned more CEUs than most. The cohort plans that you espouse through your DEI plan support the position that children of color would learn better and feel more comfortable if they had a teacher of color. I can find no support for that proposition. I've seen great teachers of all colors, and I've seen poor teachers of all colors. And the fact is, the color of their skin was not a determining factor. The state has used the Gerschens and Son 2018 research as the basis for showing that children of color achieved better when they had teachers of color. The fact is that the report simply states that children who had a teacher of color applied to more two- and four-year colleges than in the past. But in the footnotes, hidden very well is the fact that only one-third of them completed the programs. Therefore, the real effect was null and void. Yet, the state and you are inappropriately using that report as evidence. Diversity has never been a problem in cities. When I worked in Hartford, we always had a board of color, many administrators, and teachers of color. The diversity requirements were well met, but the children did not achieve as well as desired. In my experience, is not the issue poverty and lifestyle are. I had children coming to me in the winter wearing only T-shirts. I bought them clothes, and I brought clothes home to launder for them. Children in need of all races are the children that were not reading and writing or attending. My husband was a superintendent in Bloomfield. He was asked there to replace a superintendent of color who was invited to leave due to poor performance. As an experiment, suppose we fire all the white teachers in Bloomfield with their masters and six-year degrees, and we replace them with persons of color who have gone through a several-week alternative certification program proposed by then-Commissioner Cardona, who was recently appointed to Secretary of Education based on what can only be understood to be the administration's implementation of their diversity and equity platform. Since we would then have a complete school population of color and staff of color, would it then be your expectation that we would see a radical change in the achievement of these children? Diversity is not the answer because race is not the problem. Your continued support of your policy is going to separate children by skin color. By asking children to identify by race, you are encouraging the thinking that one's relationship to one's own race is familial, like brother and sister, but the relationship to other races would be more distant, like second cousins. Your policy is moving us in the direction of separate but equal, not equal versus unit. All I know is that very often, I wasn't called Mrs. B. I was called Ma. We were a family. We loved each other, and nobody in that room ever thought about the color of our skin. In my class.
Linda, I have to interrupt here. The three minutes has passed, and I hope that we got, definitely got most of the.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank Matt.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there, are there anybody else on Zoom? That's it?
I would.
Anybody here would like to address the board? Okay. All right. So we will then move on to special report to our approval of our minutes for the August 16th, 2021 meeting. And that was regularly scheduled meetings. Anybody want to make a motion on those minutes?
I wrote the motion to approve the minutes of the regularly scheduled August 16th meeting.
Okay. The second? Second, Kate, second? Yeah. I'm sure.
Very quick point of order here.
Oh, thank you.
I've been looking at the policies, you know, and if we're going to approve a motion, it has to be in the minute, in the agenda, that we're approving a motion, right?
Yeah, it should be for action discussion.
Right. But see, it just, there's no statement there on the action that it's a motion. It's just approved.
Oh. It says, the type, it says type, it's for action, for discussion, and action.
It says action, discussion.
But there's no, we looked at the policy. The policy says if we're going to vote on a motion, it has to be stated in the agenda that we're voting on a motion.
Oh, in the policy? Well, we defer that to being taken. It's either for discussion or for discussion and action. If the word appears, action, we've always said that that says that the board may or may not take action at the meeting.
Well, if that's the case, I've looked back through some of the things.
Okay.
We've tried to get motions on and been basically pushed back because it said the only time we can vote on a motion is if, in the agenda, it says we're voting on a motion.
If it says marked for action. That's how, that's how we have, we've used the word action to denote that we're going, we will be taking, could be taking action on.
So the point of order on that, where it says action.
Okay.
That's synonymous with a motion.
Yes, that's synonymous with saying that we may be taking action. And the only way the board can take action is by, is by having someone make a motion.
And we don't have to put what the motion is.
No. Nope. Not at all. So we could, like, we could have a budget discussion where we would have marked for discussion and action, and we might have multiple motions discussing what our budget proposal is going to be. Until we, until we reach a consensus, our majority on one of the motions that's raised, that's how it works.
Now. What a schedule, and if we're going forward, we just have to make sure that we understand, you know, that it's action and motion because that, I look to back to the past minutes, and it's interesting how many times we do list on the agenda, there will be a motion. And then many times, it's discussion and action. And where it's listed as a motion, there's a specific statement.
That's where.
Motion is.
Yeah, that's where, where there's a draft motion, but that, no one, no one has to read that motion. Anybody can make, if it's marked for action, anybody can make a, propose a motion for consideration.
I'm trying to follow through this now with Robert's rules of order.
Yep. Okay. So.
Particularly like, okay, I'm gonna bring up an example of last week when we were talking about baseball.
Could we, could we?
No.
It's a good, good, good point for discussion. Barry, could we have a, could we, could you raise that toward the end of the meeting where we have board comments and we can have a conversation about it? I'm just, I'm aware of the time, the time and the folks that are gonna make a presentation, so. That be all right?
Well, there are a lot of other things that come up because I, all right, I will, I'll do that, but it's just very, the point I'm trying to make is that if we're supposed, the real, the intent of Robert's rules of order is meant to allow minorities on boards, you know, to basically get items out there for discussion.
Sure.
You know? And if we, for example, have a motion out there, and that means in Robert's rule of order, we could raise a counter motion, you know, to say, you know, here is, you know, here's a motion, say, to table the motion.
Yeah, sure. Yep. Yep.
Now, but by the policy, if we don't have a motion on the board, you know, on the table, we cannot raise a motion to table that.
Motion. Right, that's correct. Yes, that's right.
So somehow we got to get a motion out first, have a motion tabled. And also, if you look at the policy, to introduce a counter motion, like to say a table motion, there, it has to be then, if I understand the policy, it has to be on the board agenda two weeks beforehand because it's a motion.
You can, no, it can be, you mean if you table it?
Yeah, so if we have an issue.
It can be either, the table motion can be made with a time. It can be time-bound or not time-bound.
So if we're having a discussion, and I wanted to raise a motion to table a motion, if I understand the policy, that I can't make that because it has to be on the agenda.
No. Uh-uh. No. No.
So it is possible that if we get, okay, so another, getting a point of order on this thing too is, here we introduce the motion, you know, to approve it by minutes. And then there's a second, then we're gonna have discussion, and then we're going to have a vote. And so it's motion, second, discussion, vote.
Right.
Most other times, as I looked at our agenda, it goes out, discussion, 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 motion, second, vote.
Right.
So I think that if.
Well, we always, but I always ask for, just once a motion has been made, that I always ask for discussion on that particular.
In terms of our procedures, you know, our recommendation is if this, if we're gonna follow rules of order, whenever we have a topic out there for discussion, we should begin the discussion with a statement of the motion and a second so that we know what the topic of the discussion is. We don't do that.
We have not, no, we have never done, we have never done that. We don't have to do that. As soon as somebody wants to immediately, if we open, we move on to the next agenda topic, and, and somebody wants to begin by making a motion, they can do that. If it's marked for action.
Or you can make a motion on something that's not marked for action if you get two-thirds of the majority to make it an action item.
Yeah. In a regularly scheduled meeting. Yes. It has to be a regularly scheduled meeting. That's why I always, always say.
The only point is, I think if we're going to work by Robert's rule of order, we should be much more consistent in how we present this. So that it was very, very clear that action means motion, and we should basically begin discussions with a motion and a second if we're gonna follow Robert's rules of order.
Yeah. But.
Can I just comment?
Yeah, sure.
I mean, I think there's, I think we, we are very, my view is we're very consistent in what we do and how we follow it, what I've seen in, you know, six years. The part, the reason we sometimes have discussion, like for approval of minutes, we don't have a discussion first because they're kind of there, and you approve it, and then you see. But often, we have discussion before a motion because we may not be sure what the motion is. Like, there's information sharing, education, learning, and kind of interchange, which is what I really liked about this board, is we, you know, my view may change as, as the discussion goes, and then we can make a motion, but you need that discussion. Because if we're making a motion before the discussion, I, I don't, sometimes I don't know what, I don't know, I haven't formed my opinion yet. So I think that's where a lot of the topics in the, you know, discussion action item is because we're going to have a discussion so that we can form someone, and you can at any point make a motion, but, or wait and see, and then make a motion. That's, that's my view.
But we also include discussion after the motion has been seconded.
Absolutely.
So we have room for more discussion.
Yes. That's what Robert Rules of Order says. It should be motion, second, discussion, vote.
Yeah.
Well, we do include discussion afterwards.
Correct.
Additional.
A lot of times, we do, we have like all kinds of discussion, and then whether or not there is an action related to it is not always said.
No, but when, once a motion has been made and it's been seconded, we don't vote until the comment is, do we want to have any additional discussion?
I agree with you. That's how it should happen.
But it does happen that way.
No.
Yes.
Absolutely.
It does.
Last week, here, last week, we were doing the board of the baseball. We had long, long discussion.
Correct.
Went all over the place. And then at the end of it, there was a motion, and we voted on.
Correct. But when we seconded that motion, we also said, is there any additional discussion?
Yeah. Before we did that, we should have begun it if we're following Robert's rules of order. When we did that baseball discussion, the motion should have come up, seconded, then we had the discussion. That's Robert's rules of order.
Okay. So, so let's, Barry, if you just bear with me, okay? So since, I've 17 years I've been doing this, can we just kind of continue the way that we've been doing it for this meeting? And I promise that I will, with Jeff, have conversations and make sure that we're, we're doing it correctly. But thanks for, thanks for bringing up the point. And I think it is a very important point to make sure that we are following Robert's rules of order because that's in our, that definitely is in our bylaws.
And it's not just to do it for doing it sake, but it's like.
Yes.
To get us into more transparency.
Yep.
In terms of what we're doing.
Yep. Okay. Very good. Okay. So we still have a motion on the table. So we're up for discussion. Is there any corrections, modifications to the minutes of the August 16th meeting? None?
There's one.
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
On the baseball thing, this is, had. There was no way last week to get up the idea that we had, we voted on using a report that was internally inconsistent. The report that we worked on had a major text and had an amendment. And the wording and the language of what we were going to do was different. We'll talk, try to raise the issue that it was internally inconsistent. Because there was nothing on the table, you know, I would love to have said, you know, I make a motion, and there was no way to do that. And so as I tried to do it, it was just basically dismissed.
Okay.
Okay? And so, and now the minutes are set up, you know, without any indication that, you know, there was a request or there was some internal inconsistency to the report on which motion was placed.
Okay.
There's no way now for us to go back and deal with this. Had we followed Robert's rules of order, there would have been a way to do it.
So would you like to amend the minutes as they are written?
There's no way to do that, Tim.
Okay. So, so there, you have no, you have no changes or, or?
No, just using as a point of.
As a point, okay. Good. I, I got it. I follow. Okay. Good. Anybody else have any corrections to, or adjustments to the minutes? Is seeing none? Okay. So with that, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? One opposed? Anybody abstaining?
I abstained. We abstained.
We still. I'm sorry. Yes, that's right. I'm sorry. Okay. So that passes. All right. Okay. So. Okay. So we'll move on to special reports, and Dan Cunningham, we have from our board segment. Hi, Dan. Welcome.
Welcome, Dan.
Always a pleasure to be here. Danny and Roseanne tonight, she, we've been on the three on five with the American Gresham Plan. It's trying to get that right. Trying to find opportunities that will best serve the town and the community and how we spend those funds. I know we're struggling with some of the same issues, I'm sure. One of the concerns, of course, is that we don't violate the law and that the way we use the funds fits within the mandates and programs that we have to be sure that we follow so that down the road, they don't come back at us and ask us to repay those funds because we use it in a way that's criteria. So we're trying to be careful to make sure we use it in a criteria and in a way that serves the town. So we've spent a lot of time and effort to try to get it right and do the best we can. That's what we've been focusing on.
Excellent. Any, any questions for our board section representatives? Okay. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Dan.
We do not have a student rep this evening, so we will move on to our discussion action items for the evening. And the first one that's up is.
I have a question, Tim. Are we going to have another representative since Grace scheduling? How is that?
Oh, you mean, you mean for a student representative? Yeah. We will, definitely. Yeah. We have, I would assume it will be Sashi.
Sashi.
Junior.
Yeah. When does that happen? I just want to update myself.
Yeah. Yeah, when the, probably in the next couple of weeks.
We have speeches next week, so we have the next couple of weeks up.
So they're running.
Little school representatives?
We are.
I always find it so good.
Yeah. For doing it three, three times this year. I think Mr. McFerrin, yeah. Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Good. Thanks. Let's see. So discussion action items. The first item up is for discussion, and that's the Equity Institute DEI presentation and report. Jeff, you wanna?
Sure. Absolutely. We have members of the Equity Institute that are here. They're gonna give a presentation and talk about the report you all received. Report, and also condensed version is in board docs as well. So in the essence of time, I'm gonna turn it over to Carla there on Zoom, and her team, I'll let her introduce her team. Hi, Carla. Can you hear me?
Hi, I can. I definitely can hear you. Thanks, Jeff. Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for welcoming us in your space. I know you have a lot to cover. This presentation is gonna be about 15 minutes, 50 to 20 minutes. We wanna definitely leave some room for board members to ask questions, should you have any. We're excited to be here with you all. We've got to just kind of observe right now the first 27 minutes of your meeting. And so just really appreciative of being in community with you all. Our goal together during the next 15 to 20 minutes is to share the final results of the root cause equity analysis. Before we start, we'd like to share a little bit about who we are and give you a little bit about our background. But I'm also going to have a colleague of mine input in the chat box, the links to the actual full report, so you have access to that. We will go over some high-level findings in the next few minutes, but we want you to have the full report early on, and you can access it through the links that's gonna be added in your chat box. So my name is Carla Vigil. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of Equity Institute. We are a small nonprofit based out of Providence, Rhode Island, but we do work outside of our state as well. We work specifically with institutions, other districts, to develop and implement innovative solutions for building more diverse, equitable, and inclusive learning environments. My background specifically involves working in education. I was a former fourth-grade teacher. I have extensive just knowledge and experience around equity, multicultural, and social justice education. I've also spent a lot of time developing frameworks and tools that I used myself when I was teaching, and so now really thinking about ways to support other teachers throughout several districts. With that, I'm gonna go ahead and pass it to my colleague, Katia, who will let you know a little bit about herself.
Thank you, Carla, and good evening, Board of Education. Thank you so much for having us here today. As Carla mentioned, my name is Katia Rodriguez, and I'm a partner here at Equity Institute. Prior to joining this team, I've served in multiple districts at capacity, both in California and here in Rhode Island, from leading after-school programs to working in operations roles. I shifted to the research side when I realized my fascination for data storytelling, so this project was perfect while I completed my master's in urban education policy at Brown University. At EI, I primarily focus on research and evaluation, so I design our research projects with intentionality and an equity lens. I'm very excited to be here with you tonight and share our findings of this project. That, I pass it on to Caitlin.
Thanks, Katia, and good evening, everyone. My name is Caitlin Moran, and I am also a partner here at Equity Institute. I split my time here between professional trainings and doing research, so it's a pleasure to work with you all in a couple of different capacities in the last few months. Prior to joining the team here, I've worked for over a decade as a classroom teacher in high schools, an administrator, both here in Rhode Island, Massachusetts, and Vermont. I have degrees from Boston University, Brown University, and Harvard University, and my specialty is in creating learning experiences for new immigrants to the United States. And I'm excited to get to dig into this data with you. With that, I'll pass it to Carla.
Great. Yeah, we actually just had the pleasure of working with all, all teachers, staff members this past Friday, I believe it was, and, and that was really, I think, a valuable experience. So we're gonna go ahead and jump into, into the purpose of our meeting today. So we've had the pleasure of working with you and your community over the last few months. Your district's leaders have expressed commitment to DEI and have been on a path to help ensure that the Eastland community has the right information needed to create actionable solutions in order to meet the needs of all diverse students. It's been about five months. I believe we, we actually connected early on. It feels like years, but that's how time goes nowadays. So we started from March 2021 this year to July 2021. You all trusted our team to conduct this analysis. This analysis is a comprehensive one, community-centered process that assess your district's DEI perceptions and values. And you'll see what I mean by comprehensive because the report is about 70 pages long, more like 56 because there's references and, and other materials in, at the end. We engage the wider range of community members to hear different ways that people describe their views, their perceptions, their experiences, and hopes associated with your school district. We do believe, we believe that data comes from the people. We believe people give us that information, and, and so building on that voice is extremely important for us. Our goal with this project was to really think about how to raise awareness in your district in order to think of strategic ways to improve policies and practices that raise and acknowledge. that raise and acknowledge historically silent, silent voices. So we wanna make sure that we are building ways to, to develop equitable outcomes for all, for all our learners. So your district engaged in four phases, we are in the last phase, we're reporting and presenting. We started with the discover and design phase and you all might have been part of that where we worked to develop the instruments used during this process, we really wanted to get feedback from your community. We then connected and refined those instruments and tools and confirmed what we were gonna use in order to ensure that our methods were reliable and valid. Then we collected all the data and analyzed it, which is the fun part for like researchers like Katia and the other team members. And so we are here today with the full report and recommendations which are included in your, in, in the report. And you'll also hear some in a couple of minutes. And with that, I'm going to pause because I have said a lot and I just wanna make sure if there are any questions regarding what I've just said that you all have a chance and space to ask them.
Everybody good? Good, carry on.
All right, let's go.
Sounds great.
All right, Katia, go ahead.
So we're gonna review the methodology we use. We collected qualitative and quantitative data through a combination of surveys, focus groups and interviews with community members across stakeholders within the district. This included students in third to twelfth grades, alumni, families, teachers, staff members, board members and principals. As Carla mentioned earlier, we value community voice, so we ensure this process incorporated stakeholders in the, from the research design phase until now. So we did this by holding what we call community feedback sessions, this was during the second phase, as Carla mentioned earlier. During this time, we met with several key members of the community to get feedback on survey items to ensure clarity, accessibility and relevance prior to administering the survey to the full community. This step was included to establish the survey's validity. Validity means that our instruments were, accomplish its intended goal. And also reliability, as Carla mentioned. When we say reliability, we mean that if any other organization was to come to your district and conduct a very similar project, their findings would be essentially the same as ours. So as a result of our committee feedback sessions, the survey items were modified by changing language and modifying the user experience to include a sliding scale for agreement rather than discrete categories for both high school and adult respondents. The change language was from NA or none of the above to unsure or I don't know. Participate, committee members mentioned that to show that they preferred this to show that when an item was applicable, but it was outside of their knowledge. So right now I'm gonna pause for questions as well to see if anyone has any questions regarding this piece.
Questions? Nope. Okay, carry on.
Thank, yeah, we will be pa- pausing a few times because there's a lot of talking and we wanna make sure that you're following us. So upon finalized, making those changes, the surveys were administered during the month of May of this year. They included a combination of qualitative and quantitative items for all stakeholder groups ranging from eleven to fifty-five questions. The figure on the screen shows you the number of responses were received from each stakeholder across your district, as you can see now. This slide shows the demographic breakdown of all survey respondents. The first figure shows that survey takers were predominantly female at forty-four percent, followed by males of forty-one and a few non-binary folks. On the second figure, we see that approximately fifty-eight percent of survey takers identified as white with the next largest identity, ethnicity being Asian at fourteen percent, followed by mixed-race individuals at eleven percent. We also conducted virtual focus groups and interviews from May, from April to May twenty-twenty-one. It was important for us to include voices across all stakeholder groups and use a representative sample. So we randomly selected and invited a hundred and forty-four community members and forty-one opted to participate. The image on the screen shows the breakdown of the number of participants in each group. The demographic trends were very similar to that of state, of survey takers, as you can see on the breakdown on the screen. It is important to note that the focus group participants are demographically similar to the district demographics overall. And again, now that we're done with the methodology, we are gonna pause in case anyone has questions regarding the methods mentioned.
Okay.
So you said a hundred and forty-four community members?
Yes.
Which? Okay, so I'm, I'm just wondering, the family numbers seem like low representation as far as the outcomes of the survey. And then looking at community members, I'm thinking police, fire department in Parks and Brat and then like our board of selectmen, other, other stakeholders in the community, not just education, people with kids, board of that administrators, were you able to survey or get feedback or input from people outside of our little bubble? Do you know what I'm saying?
Do you mean community members outside of the district?
No.
Yeah, sorry, I understand.
Our board of selectmen, our Parks and Brat, our other, other, like the fire department, the police department, other people who are stakeholders, part of our community, a larger part of our community, but not part of education per se.
Hi Kay, I, this is Caitlin, I understand your question and no, that was not the, the intent of this project. The intent of this project is to, to really look closely at those people that have close relationships with the school itself. So looking at the primary stakeholders of a school as students, the learners who are kind of receiving the service of education and then everyone who is connected to the organization through them directly. So we did not look at indirect community connections, that would be more of a root cause equity analysis of the Eastland community. We looked at people directly connected or tangentially connected through a learner or, or themselves as students or alumni to the school district. That's a good question, though.
Thank you, appreciate your answer too.
Anybody else, any question? I was curious about the, the number of responses, you know, in terms of the level of engagement. Did you find this to be comparable to what you typically experience or, or more or less? Do you have any comment on that?
Caitlin, can you actually go back to that slide really quickly? And to answer your question, yes, this is very common, but what we see with other districts, the survey responses, Caitlin? Thank you. So as you can see, there were twenty, twenty-three hundred responses and that actually was one of the greatest, highest responses we received, especially from students. So this is really great because we get to see what the learners, which is, are the ultimately primary receiver. So this is really great and yes, overall, we did receive very similar numbers than we do from other districts.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else, carry on.
Great, so now I'm gonna pass the mic to Carla so she can go over what's at the work.
Oh, sorry. I was like, where am I, in my, in my screen? Okay, here we go. So I, we just wanted to go over the domains and the themes and, and this is really important and you'll notice, you'll notice in the report that we have organized all our findings through domains and themes. And so we use this to categorize content at both a ma- micro and macro level. So as you can see in this figure, domains one and two focus on schooling classroom practices, whereas domain three examines district-wide processes. We use this again to think about where to code the information that we were getting. And so it really tells the story of, of your district. We're gonna go ahead and move from here, this is just to let you know how everything was categorized in your report. But now we're gonna get to like the real meat of the, of the, of this presentation, which is reviewing the strength, findings and recommendations for each of these domains. Go ahead, Caitlin.
Great, thanks Carla. So as Carla said, we're gonna go over each domain one by one. I will pause for questions after each domain and no, there is so much more information in the report that if, if you have a question, your best bet is to go right into the report that I sent the link earlier to. And I'm happy to answer any just clarification questions as we go. So in domain one, we focused on experience. We really found that the vast majority of stakeholders in the Eastland community found deep value in the school district and the work. Their positive experience rested on the academic preparation that the school district provides or provided for them. Through our multiple methods, again, the surveys, focus groups and interviews, we also unearthed trends from all stakeholder groups. One of the trends we found is that people in power in the district have often been silent or inconsistent when addressing current events or responding in ways that are in alignment with your strategic plan and your mission. This wavering back and forth has left stakeholders feeling that they're, they're unclear sometimes on the, the strategic plan and mission of the district. It has, one of the things we recommend is whether you have this strategic plan and these equity goals that you're working towards and standing firm in those values will allow stakeholders to feel that leadership is able to take a strong, value-driven stand rather than trying to appease all sides who, who might be working in other ways against the district's strategic plan. One of the things we recommend in the report is really establishing community and school norms on respect and inclusion that are in line with the district's strategic plan. We also found that people from all stakeholder groups, from elementary students all the way to high school students, staff, families, alumni, felt stressed by being a high-achieving person in a high-achieving district. This came through in all domains, not just this domain. And we provide various recommendations in the report on how to prioritize and invest in mental health supports for students and staff. I know the high school has been working on their portrait of an ideal graduate. And this would be a great place to start to look comprehensively at both the academic and social emotional skills that you want students to graduate Eastland with. Students and teachers are wanting more hands-on activities and opportunities for risk-taking in the classroom. And both of these areas would develop critical thinking skills for students after graduation. I will pause there for, for clarification questions on domain one, prior to moving into domain two.
Okay.
When I read the report, I'm wondering if there's compounding issues because of the pandemic and if there would be any correction factors, because I know people are stressed, but are we stressed because of the pandemic? Are we stressed because of the EI or are we just stressed?
Yeah, so that's a great question. This came through all stakeholder groups, including alumni. And we surveyed alumni from over a decade ago to just, you know, recently. And that, that remains true across all alumni groups. So I don't think it's pandemic-related, I'm sure as, as all stress is more compounded and complex right now, that is not helping. But it doesn't seem to be unique to the last year and a half.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good question.
All right, let's talk about domain two, which is learning. In domain two, again, it's very clear to us that education is such a strong value in your community. And we saw that staff members work really hard to meet the expectations for, from the community as well. However, staff need time to fully grasp new initiatives and implement these new concepts before moving on to the next phase of professional development. Staff really want to do well and they feel that they're moving at a very rapid pace without time to internalize and apply new concepts. We recommend investing time in professional development that is aligned to the strategic plan and ensuring that teachers have the opportunities to internalize and refine before moving on to a new concept. We know you have quite a strong coaching program in the district and so that would be a great way to use the coaching model as well. As I in, kind of hinted at earlier, students are really craving more opportunities for experiential learning. And people from all stakeholder groups would love to see an increase in trade classes and technical education options for students. We recommend creating more intentional opportunities, both in general education courses and in technical education courses for students to explore multiple post-secondary pathways, whether in college or career. And finally, in domain two, we are, there's a seeming over-identification of Black, Indigenous and students of color who are receiving special education services. Now, EI did not do statistical analysis with your district, so we don't have the data to support or refute this claim. However, the perception among all stakeholder groups itself is problematic for people. We recommend using restorative practices to acknowledge any past missteps and harm caused to members of community by this perception. And not only through this, but there's other things in the report as well that are tied to this that would be worth addressing. This is, is not unique to Eastland, but would be a very brave step in committing to this work. Again, that's domain two, so I will pause for questions.
Questions on domain two? Okay.
In the report, you suggest that we become allies and are there going to be action items suggested so that we can take and put the survey and the report and all the information into actual plan?
Yep, so if you, the recommendations are all bulleted out by steps that we, we hope are really action-oriented. So next steps you could take, include auditing your curriculum to uncover inequable tendencies, inviting students in to give more information on their perceptions, perhaps around special education services or talking to support staff about how, how they're viewing students who are assigned to special education. So a lot of the recommendations that you see in the report are very much meant to be action-oriented. And I know one of the things we've talked about with, with Jeff is having the time and space to really dig into this with your board and with your committee so as to create the kind of action plan for how you all hope to address the recommendations.
I missed that, so some of the recommendations towards the end of the report are actually action items that you are suggesting that we would implement?
Yes, all of the recommendations are action items that we would, we would definitely recommend implementing.
I don't think you have the same thing that we do.
I don't have that.
You don't.
It's right there.
Yeah.
It's the orange.
Oh, I see, I see. Okay, I didn't, I didn't see that.
They narrowed down a lesser.
I'm sorry. I didn't see that here, I did, okay, got it.
So again, page forty.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and go to domain three.
Oh, Eric's got it.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, you have a question?
Yeah, yeah, thanks. Can you just explain, I don't think I understand the last bullet of the findings as I'm trying to think that you just discussed the over-identification.
Sure, there was, there's a perception among stakeholders that a lot of the Black, Indigenous or students of color are in special education, that the special education population is not demographically similar to the district overall. Your district is a majority-white district and so you would expect a majority of students receiving special education services to be white. And whether that is true or not, we, we don't have the statistical analysis to say, but stakeholders in all groups feel that there are more Black, Indigenous and students of color in special education service than are proportionate to the general population.
So what, and so thank you, so what, so what does that mean? So there's a perception that there's more, so does that? I don't know what to do.
One of the things we would recommend is doing a statistical analysis of the number of students who are in special education services and breaking that down by demographics so that you could assess whether or not that perception is true. And if that perception is true, taking the necessary anti-bias training measures to, 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 to correct that, to ensure that Black students are, as Black students especially are often over-identified to receive special education services and having the tools so that teachers are able to understand and address that as well. And if that's not true, then working with stakeholders to understand why that perception exists. So what is it about the students of color who are a minority population in your district? What is it about the perception that they are in special education that is causing people to feel that they are over-identified?
Maybe I'll talk.
Yeah, I don't really understand. It's data we can.
Yeah, yeah, Kim, Kim is nodding her head.
I'm gonna go ahead and go to domain three. So this is the systems domain, so this looks at the, the ways the school district operates. So we saw that there have been policies that have changed in response to stakeholder feedback, which is really positive and shows engagement with the community. We also saw, and this kind of addresses the earlier point about compounded stress, that counselors have been such a critical resource to students, both in entering special education services and in navigating the, the process of applying to college during COVID nineteen. So major, major shout-out to them. and in navigating the the process of applying to college during COVID-19. So major, major shout out to them. We're also able to unearth opportunities to create more equitable systems. Right now, there is no method for students who are facing financial hardship to communicate that need with the district. Students with health impairments are also facing obstacles to full participation in school events. So we recommend redesigning some of those policies that eliminate financial barriers to school events as well as creating ways to promote greater access for all students, no matter their level of ability with of engagement with the event. All stakeholders want to see more investment in academic outcomes, mental health counselors and culturally responsive teaching. As we stated previously, this could take the form of more vocational classes, increased investment in social workers, increased professional development opportunities. Participatory budgeting is a strong next step in understanding how the community wants to move forward. And something that, two other things that came up in systems that are actionable recommendations to address. One is the school calendar. The school calendar currently reflects a Christian-centered understanding of holidays and days off and is not accounting for all religious traditions that are present in the Eastline community. So we recommend modifying the school calendar to incorporate all religious holidays for people in the community. And this is a really great place to partner with students, and we've included resources for how to do that in the report. And finally, people from all stakeholder groups see the need to diversify staff, teachers and leaders throughout the district. We recommend actively recruiting staff from outside Eastern Connecticut to pursue careers, opportunities in the district as well as creating the conditions necessary for Black, Indigenous and staff of color to thrive at Eastline. I'll pause there for questions on domain three before I turn it back to Carla.
Questions? More questions? I had one, just one question, and it kind of goes back to some of the beginnings of how many roughly, how many alumni were participated in this survey?
Sure, the alumni did it. The alumni only participated in focus groups. And we had, I can't remember the exact number now. We had a number of alumni express interest. The actual number who participated are in the report. Katya, if you want to jump in there. But we also had alumni submit information through us through a feedback form. So they had multiple ways of engaging. But Katya, if you want to jump in there?
I do, yes. So we invited 24 alumni to participate and three could meet during that time. And as Caitlin mentioned, we did provide an additional form where they couldn't put additional comments that they had, and we received 27 responses.
Oh, good. Okay, good. Very good, very good. Okay, thank you.
Of course, I will pass it to Carla.
Well, folks, I'm not gonna, I don't have much to say. I think that the team here did a really just thorough job in explaining the process, the methodology, as well as some of the findings. And the only thing that we are are gonna do right now to conclude this is give you this QR code, which just accesses, access the same report that you all could, we all sent in the chat app, chat box earlier today. This is to be shared with all your community stakeholders. The link is on this screen as well. We also put an infographic, I believe, in in the in the box where folks can kind of see again, a high level of of the report and access the report through a QR code. So just trying to find multiple ways to get the report out for folks, specifically all the folks that participated in in this process. But that that is all we have for you. We are really honored to have worked with your community. It was a great learning process. Definitely not perfect, but what is in 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 education. And so we were able to work, I think, very successfully with with Jeff and and Jackie. And so just really want to extend that gratitude and appreciation to all folks who participated in this process, but a a big appreciation to to Jeff and Jackie, who really have been working with us for the past five plus months. And with that, we will, we're concluding our presentation. We definitely, you all, I think, can get our contact information if you have any additional questions. And we hope to continue our partnership at capacity in the future.
Carla, thank you very much. Appreciate you and the team and the work you did. Yeah, I just ask, I have one other question, and that is, I just, in general, I was really moved by the openness and frankness in many of the comments that you lifted and put in the document. I mean, it was a very, I mean, it was just, you know, it it felt very engaging in terms of the the comments and input. I was just curious, is that how did that, how did, how did all of that dialogue strike you in terms of how our community, how our district is 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 at us, where we are in terms of at a stage with all of this?
Sure, I can answer that.
I I think I got it. Yeah, thanks. And you could build off of that. No, I think, and the only reason I want to is because I think that you, that's a deep question, and I and I think we can both answer and myself and the team, because this is always, one, an engaging process, two. One of our goals at EI is, you know, we 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 the work that we push and believe in is complex, and I think it's complex during these times, but especially. And so one of the things that, you know, we really value and stay true to is including all voices of people. And the people in your community are the people that, you know, create that community. And so one thing that we learned here was, you know, how to be responsive to folks who wanted to tell us everything and wanted to share. I mean, I think we had somebody from Florida email me who had their child in the district like seven years ago, and he wanted to tell me part of his experience. We had folks that were, you know, upset. And so we had to really respond to that as well and to be open and to welcome that feedback as well and 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 add it into into the the report. One thing we do, I want to just like raise here is that we do believe that your district is ready for change. We do believe that most of your district has shown at least 25% of your community members have shown that they're ready, they're ready to move in that direction. They may not completely understand what equity is or looks like or feels like. But their perceptions are that they they'd like to move forward with this work. And so that they're bought bought in. And so I think that's really important, because that will hopefully hopefully spread to other folks who might not believe it yet or might not understand what it means. And and so with that, I don't know, Caitlin, I it's, I seem like you want to add, okay.
Carla, I was just, I I think I read in the report somewhere and I was, I can't find it, but it that I saw that the perception, my perception was that that the children are are at a further advanced stage in terms of ready to continue down this path than our than our the the older ones of us.
Yes, and I will say that's not uncommon. Generation after generation is statistically more accepting and open to initiatives around diversity. We've seen that throughout history in terms of gay marriage, in terms of civil rights and equal rights legislation. And if you look at page thirty-four in the report, you'll be able to see kind of exactly what that information is, that that is not unique to Eastline, but it is a great indication of, you know, progress to come.
Progress, yeah.
I have a quick question. There's something about the tipping point where it has to be twenty-five percent, and it sounds like perhaps we're at that twenty-five percent, but I'm just wondering, again, Mr. Cunningham is here, who's on our Board of Selectmen. You know, and I really feel like it just cannot be the Board of Ed, like it has to be our community, like everybody needs to be a stakeholder in this process and that we are bearing the burden of responsibility that everybody in our town should be bearing and try to make a difference and be more respectful and be more accepting and be a more welcoming community. And do you have any suggestions, I guess, before we let you go on that topic?
Well, I think you're, I think you're off to a good start. I'll say that. And I I will also say that this is a long process. And so I think by starting with a report that's objective and that shows the findings of of what folks are, what are they saying and believing and experiences experiencing is a start. And so I, one of the reasons we added all the recommendations, and there are several, is because you can now begin as leaders to prioritize what you're going to do in year one, in year two, and year three, et cetera, et cetera, because, as I mentioned, it is a long process of change. But we do believe that that you are all on on your way, and I think with your strategic plan and having a very defined definition and statement of what equity is in it in your district, then people will begin to embody that in your district. I mean, because you can refer back to it. So I think taking those small steps are gonna give you huge returns as you move forward in your community.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate that.
Okay, well, good, very good.
Thank you. I'll take it.
Let me just, let me just state too that we're going to in board docs, obviously, the full report is under administrative, but we're gonna put it on our website. We'll have it out. So the public can see now that you've all seen.
All right, take care. Have a great week.
This is the procedural question I have, and I didn't want to take the time off. But again, back to Robert's order, I'm not clear on the purpose of this discussion. So what I'd like to do is introduce a motion that I would have liked to motion at the beginning, but because of the preference to have a discussion and the motion. Motion would be something like the minutes reflect that we just that the board discussed the report for more informational purposes only. Any consideration of the recommendations will be subject to full Board of Ed review at a later date.
Repeat your motion, please.
The board discussed the equity report for informational purposes only. Any consideration of recommendations will be subject to full Board of Ed review at a later date.
Yep, Jill seconds it. Any any discussion on that motion? Okay, oh, this is favor of the motion, so probably saying aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Good. Any 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 other comments or whatever? I thought, I've actually thought the presentation was very good.
I thought that the presentation was really good. I think that the analysis was telling. And I think that everyone should read it.
Yeah, yep, that's good. And we are gonna have a we have scheduled a meeting of the ad hoc committee, the EI ad hoc committee. They're gonna have conversations about this. And when we come back at our next meeting, we'll, we'll be able to have full framework for having a conversation around what we've all seen and heard and and see it from the from the analysis. So, good. Okay, all right, shall we move on? So the next item is I'm sorry, oh, go ahead, Jenny.
When are we as a board going to actually discuss this report?
I would say at the next meeting. Yeah, yep, definitely.
So we're gonna discuss it before the DEI committee discusses it?
I thought it would be good for the the DEI committee to discuss, discuss it, I think, for schedule next month. Just have a conversation and that committee can come back and and basically share some thinking to help the board, you know. Try to get down to kind of the specifics of what what we might do with this.
So not a discussion item tonight, just a presentation.
Right, yeah. Okay, all right. So next item for dis, mark for discussion and action is the draft charter for the reimagining ad hoc committee that has been put together and that that draft charter is in our packet. And now Eric, would you like to, or Jeff, would you like to say a few words?
Either or, you want to start or you want me to start? No, so we, our our committee had met, we had, and we felt, been back and forth quite a bit on this document and the language. Tried to follow suit with other charters that we've done. We did one for the Fireball Committee and trying to keep them direct to the point and and in layman's terms for the most part. So this is kind of what we, we get a lot of great feedback from all members. A lot of words, I think, this is kind of the the final draft. But I know there's, and so Barry, you had a couple of the thoughts too, which if you want to talk about, we can with this, but this is kind of what we came up with, and we're looking forward to kind of getting this committee engaging in discussions about reimagining. Where we're gonna be going years ahead. So.
Like one question of information. Is this a policy now if we vote on it?
It's it's a charter for the ad hoc committee. It basically, it's it's the, the board has formed an ad hoc committee to begin the process of reimagining the the district, okay? And the board now, if whatever the, if we adopt this charter or modify this this charter, and if we vote on it with a majority, that will become the 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 actual marching orders for the ad hoc committee to to do on behalf of the board and then to come back to the board with the with their
If you look in the policy, there's no way in our board policies for an ad hoc committee to make a recommendation to the board. It only has to come through the policy committee.
No, no, that's not, that's not correct, Barry. Ad hoc, ad hoc committees can be established by by the board and given tasks through through a charter, through a charter like this to then know what the board would like the ad hoc committee to do. I don't know how else you would do it.
I don't, but it's that, it's just, it's interesting how things can come up like this and be established, but I can't find it in the policy.
Well, okay, so.
Okay, that's just a question, but.
Okay.
Okay, so now, what, again, just a point of information, what is our purpose right now? What are we going to do?
What are we going to do? Well, I thought we'd hear some feedback or discussion about where the, you know, the committee was and putting together this little charter, some of the issues or not issues that were, came up. And then, and then here, any comments from any of the board members, still what what you see before you in the in the charter. And if, and and then people can, people, anybody can make a motion to move forward or to modify or to do whatever with the term. Go ahead, Candace.
I I almost want to ask you if you're okay. Are you okay? Because this is something that you've actually been working on. And I don't know what I walked into. I did, I profusely apologize for having to go and, you know, bring children around. So it was ten minutes that I missed. But I walked in listening, and it's almost as though you are just on the defensive on everything. So I'm not too sure if everything's okay or what, but this is very clear what this is. That's all I have to say.
Okay, right, that's good. So anything, anything else to add? Eric is the chair of the little committee.
So I think, you know, just take a step back, right? So the committee just remind everybody, we had a lot of, when we set up this committee, I don't remember if it was everyone, it was close to everyone volunteered. We we had to come up with a group of four and ended up with Lee, Candace, Barry and myself from as as board representatives. We have Annalise and Jeff. I know Jill attended the meeting to listen in, and and everyone is open. It's open for people to come and listen in as a board. Obviously, we can't go over the quorum, but you can listen and and hear the discussion. So that's kind of what, and then it took us a little while. I think the first meeting, we went roundabout a little bit because we're all kind of had different perspectives and then we spent some time kind of jotting down and then iterating. So we came up with a charter, iterated with the group with some different, with some modifications. But I think as Jeff said, you know, we want to something somewhat concise, as concise as as we can be hopefully clear and to the point of what this group is set out to do. And, you know, we're looking for board comments and thoughts and and questions and and ultimately agreement so that you know, we can take that next step as as a group to move forward. And our commitment as a team as well as you know, whether it's every meeting or a lot of meetings, you know, we're gonna report back to the Board of Ed to go through, here's what we discussed. Here's some of the things that we're thinking about to continuously get feedback, because I, you know, that's gonna be really important. So. I, you know, that's gonna be really important, so.
And just one piece to add to that quick recovery versus reimagining too, I think is really, you know, we've got to kind of define and get that baseline of how much do we need to. Actually recover, or maybe we are already beyond a lot of that recovery and ready to to start working forwards. Um, you know, as a, as a district, so I think that's part of the next discussion items that are gonna come forth that the ad hoc committee as we creep into the fall here uh as well.
Yeah, let's see, Kate did. I was looking this way, but I saw Kate's hand go up.
Well, I'm just looking at paragraph four of your statement and thank you for your work that you guys are doing on this. So it's looking at the district will use this baseline information. Okay, as students return to in person, okay, so then you're referring back to the baseline assessment of students as they return. Along with the information from related assessments, and I'm wondering if you're considering. This as a related assessment because of the surveys and the analysis and all of that that has gone on. If that is going to be kind of a driving. Um, I guess roadmap, for lack of a better word, and then the action items that uh we found there on page forty, if that's. Going to be basically what's going to be, because it seems like a lot of the work is already done, if I'm not. No, I'm saying, as far as like the assessments, some of the analysis, having some of a vision.
Not quite yet, no, we're just starting with school year too early to to get any baseline to set, we're just.
I don't think that this report is part of it.
But this is talking about that, this is saying.
I mean, I mean.
Diversity, equity, inclusion in that paragraph four, I don't know how it could be.
So, yeah, I mean, I think one of the things that we've been, you know, we're going to do and think about is. You need to kind of collect information from many different sources to start formulating a plan. We need to understand, you know, we have some historical assessments, we're gonna be getting. Some, some assessments when we end the last year that are starting to come through as well as there's assessments that are going on. In the beginning of this year, and so that's data, right? Want to see where our students are. We have this phenomenal analysis that we're gonna be able to look at and and kind of include. There's some other inputs I think that we'll have and through that we'll be able to hopefully discuss and come up with a plan. Um, that will incorporate and the whole of that.
Other comment, other comments?
I just wanted to address the ad hoc committee's point of this. The policy, we have a policy on ad hoc committees and how they're established in their timeline, and it's policy ninety-one thirty. That anybody needs to reference what that policy is. And that's the policy concerning ad hoc committees on the board.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to add that this is really in the starting phase, so. As we move forward, there's gonna be a tremendous amount more conversations and also the ad hoc committee will expand. It's not just going to be the few people that um Eric had mentioned, it's going to encompass more stakeholders. So there will be admin, there will be students, there will be community, there will be parents, there'll be lots of different stakeholders. Part of this ad hoc committee, if I correct, I just want to double check, um you know, because I think that that's a really important factor. Um, in order to get all of the information that's needed, I mean, this isn't. Cut and dry and it's not black and white and it takes time and it takes a tremendous amount of patience, to be honest with me, so.
It's the gateway to what will be our next district, it'll be a five-year plan or a three-year plan or or do we do a one-year plan? So it's that gateway and that's what's, that's what's exciting about it, because we're ending our five-year plans, the last year of our, our long-range plans.
I just want to add too that the draft that everybody's looking at is a draft that each and every person. Had time to give input on and it was condensed, which I prefer. And then not less is more, but kind of, right? Because it is direct and it is to the point. So I appreciate that and I appreciate all of the effort and input that each and every member uh put in. So Barry, thank you because you were part of this.
Barry? Two things, just turn to the general board process. Future meeting, I would love to be able to come to the board with a full um. Full commitment to do everything I can to make this the best district it possibly can be. Without having my mental health compute as I am trying to do that. And that's just a recommendation and a suggestion I would like to have. Second, um, I'd like to move that we table this and send it back to the committee. Uh, there are several reasons for that, um but I'd like to move on that and I'll go into discussion if I get a second on that.
Is there a second on the, on the motion that Barry has made?
Which is to move this back to the committee uh for further review before we bring it to the board consideration.
Kate seconds it.
My reason to this are, first, it's a draft and I think it's um. And one, I want to save the board embarrassed. For going through a process of approving a draft. When we can send it back and wait until we can get a full document. That has the, you know, the full uh. Amendment of everybody on the subject. Second, the uh side looked at this and the feedback I've been writing on this is that um. Let's say it's tactically, um, there's some grammatical inconsistencies. You know, in terms of uh verb subject, that type of stuff that could merit copy editing. So that the document that we do bring for finalization is um would pass muster, say in a. High school English class. The third is that I think that the um. Document is, the issue, two issues that I kept trying to break up are accountability and proactivity. That we should have a document that supports accountability for the board and also proactive. At a very high level, not that we are uh not any specific action, but tactical stuff that that Jonathan is necessary about. We said high level issue for accountability and proactive. There are three major uh components of this, the policy, you know, the uh.
I'm sorry, policies?
In terms of the chart.
Okay.
You know, this draft document.
Yep.
Uh, there was an issue related to social emotional environment. If we have that, there are specific ways that we can uh access well-documented. Socio-metrically sound surveys to establish a baseline for. Uh, socio-emotional uh conditions for our kids and use that to uh follow through that periodically. So that we can um document, we can say, you know, in terms of uh the accountability and proactive. We said we're gonna do this with the accountability and proactivity as we watch the surveys and back in, we can do proactive. We have a second major emphasis in this on diversity, equity and inclusion. Now, we can have accountability and proactivity on that because in our DEI document, we have ongoing. Uh, DEI action teams, they will document every action team at the grade level and the school level will say. Here are things going on, here's what we did about it, here are the results, you know, uh so we have. The third part of that deals with uh student learning. Now, that initially was in there, but it got turned around to, not turned around, but it moved into educational improvements. Now, that is, there are two things about that, one, educational programs are what adults do, not what kids. The other two items are related to accountability in terms of what's happening in kids. I think that if we're going to get on the um instructional side of this, we should set up a document that is. Anchored in what's happening to kids. Now, so we do instruction improvement, that's what adults do, and we have some way of figuring out what. To what end are we doing instructional improvements? There's something implicit in that, we're gonna instructionally prove for this reason, because this is what we want to have in the kids. Right, so I think that we should be placed or have more discussion on replacing that. Statement about what adults are going to do with a statement about what is going to happen as a result of doing these. So that if we basically take this and put it not in a draft format. But put it in a final document format where we are specifically focused on a set of outcomes that which are accountable. And proactive, in the area of socio-emotional supports, we want a safe, non-toxic environment for our kids. We want a system that is uh where students are gonna champion and foster diversity, equity, inclusion. And we have a s- system, a district. That is focused on a specific end, an outcome of what's going to happen for students as a result of all the instructional programs. So that's why I think that we should table this, send it back to the committee and take uh get dropped out of it. Or uh copy edited, so it's in uh, you know, really, you know, all the, it's copy.
I think, I think Barry, what I'm hearing is, when I read this, this charter, it says. The ad hoc committee will generate the new baselines.
It's not clear.
But that's, that's what I read.
It says baseline and there's a question about whether baseline should be baseline or face lines.
Yeah, well, we can do that. Okay, yep, okay, so we'll. Yeah, there's a second, uh so we have a motion and it's been called, let's see. Vote on the call, yeah. Right, okay, so all those in favor to call the uh. Motion, yeah, to stop the debate, signify by saying aye. Anybody opposed? Everybody want to abstain? You opposed? Kate was, was he yes?
I abstained.
You abstained, okay, so there was so. So, no, no. Okay, so now we vote on the motion to table uh the uh, the uh draft charter. So um all those in favor of of the motion signify by raising your hands, so.
I'm sorry, I didn't see, it's Barry, no, Barry, Kate, thank you.
And all those opposed? And anyone want to abstain?
Alright, so I just want to make sure I have the vote correctly. Barry and Kate uh said yes, table. Eric, Candace, Tim, Jamie, Lee and John said no and abstaining was Jill and Bill.
This is table, excuse me, I just want to be sure, tabling this discussion.
Tabling the mo- tabling the.
Okay, yes, I do want to table the action.
So you don't want to abstain?
Okay, sorry.
I know, that's why I just, I want to make sure I have it accurate to written down. So I have three, six, one.
Three, six, one, so, so that motion is defeated. Second, Candace seconds it, um so discussion on that. Um, John's motion. I, I would just, I would just like to say, I totally believe that that what's written. On this charter is exactly the right first step. And I, and I really am excited about all of what Barry had to say because I think that that is in fact. The next step and part of the next step and the next step, and I'm so glad that Barry is going to be part of the process. Because I think you've got a lot of great insights on how to move forward with this, so. But I was just gonna say too, I, 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 you know, wasn't part of the committee, I know that it was a lot of hard work. But I, I agree that there is room for some editing. English is not my strength, but the third paragraph and the last sentence. I've, I must admit, I've just read that fifteen times to try to make sense of exactly what you're trying to say there and. Um, I get the gist that this is time to do a, a check, see where we are. Um, and and identify which things are working, at least that's, that's what I'm reading into it. But I'm not comfortable with the wording that's here right now because um, you know. Kind of convincing myself that that's what I'm seeing, but I'm not really seeing that exactly, so.
Good, good, any other comments? Barry?
One to make is that it's an okay document and I would just say that I'm, I'm not satisfied with just. Accepting something that's okay, I think we should have a very best document of work.
Okay, okay.
So, just for clarification. Charter, charters that come to the board are always a draft. Until the board approves them, correct?
Yep.
So, even, even if you took it back to the drawing board and edited it, it will still come to the board as a draft. Until the board approves it, so no matter what, even if it went back to go back, it would still have to come back to us as a draft.
Yep, yep, and, and the ad hoc committee has freedom, obvious, always, always has to come back with a rap, a proposal. To expand, adjust or move the, the, to modify their charter. Because they've done more work and they, they see that that it's necessary to modify the charter. And that can come to the board and the board can hear that argument and take action on that, on that if the board chooses.
John?
And I'll just say, I'm all for the best, just, this is gonna say, that's why, I'm an alumni, so I think I'm the board. Um, but holding a process and not getting to work is the worst thing. So, let's get to work, move it forward and go get some of this motion.
Yeah, okay, any other, any other comments? Okay, so we've got a motion uh to on this charter, so all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand. Eric, Bill, Candace, Tim, Jamie, Lee and John. And, and those opposed the motion, uh signify by saying aye, raise your hand, Barry, Kate?
Are you, are you opposing it or abstaining, just so I know?
And there are no abstentions, okay, so the motion passes, okay, alright. Okay. Moving on, uh. For discussion, an update and review of the allocations of the ARP uh funds, Jeff?
Yes, we want to bring this uh back to the table, just uh once again to share out um an overview of, you know, how we outlined the ARP funding for this first year. Um, and uh under priority, under the grant, you know, we had to um allocate it by priority, sixty priority one. Priority three and priority four are the ones that we used. Um, I want to be crystal clear with uh the fact with the baseball field, so if you look down at the, the bottom. Um, because these were the newer ones, because when we talked last about how we were gonna fund the baseball field, see the tech team leader and you see software. So those two were originally not part of ARP funding, those are in the operating budget. So what we're doing now is we're using ARP funds to cover the cost of those in the operating budget and then using that hundred and seventy thousand. To uh cover the cost of the baseball. Um, that's what we've, that's what the board allocated up to hundred and seventy-five thousand at the last meeting. So just want to be clear with that, um the, these are, you know, we've got an AIM van in here, uh we're not sure if we'll need that. But we put it in as a potential definite need with the numbers that we have, you know, in AIM. Um, so a few of these still need to be discussed, but we had to get the grant in, so that's why, again, we want to keep bringing this forward so the board can see it. Um, but all these other positions are, you know, are in and uh for the most part have been uh. Have been hired, um and we're underway, so at the bottom, um S R funds or ARP, S R funds that are available. You know, it would have been the four hundred thousand, but with the baseball field now, we have two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six, nine and seven. For the next, for the next two years, uh and how we allocate those dollars. Um, will be determined as we start talking about the budget process. So we'll keep kind of bringing this back and where changes and shifts happen, but this'll go right alongside of our budget process as we, you know, move through uh. In prep for twenty-two and twenty-three. Any questions at all? I'm on this document.
Just to, as we move forward looking at budget, all of these things for the most part are gonna get rolled into the. Regular budget moving forward.
Well, they're either gonna be one year, so they're gonna get rolled in or over the next three years or two years, I should say. Well, they're either going to be one year, so they're going to get rolled in, or over the next three years, or two years, I should say, or a three-year process. Depending how we use that remaining two hundred and twenty-eight or two hundred and twenty-nine thousand.
Are all of these items new initiatives that were taken?
No, like the math coach, elementary math coach, we decided at one point, oh, back when we were finalizing the budget process to put that in under ARP. The other ones.
No, but there's nothing in this list that was already existing from previous budget years. That moved to this list?
No.
No. So, so all of these things, if we wanted to keep them, are going to get rolled onto it. Our budget's going to go up minus what we might be able to defer with the leftover funds for a little bit and then.
That's going to be the discussion.
I just want, I'm just trying to understand. So we got all these great things, but there's a good chance we're going to lose a lot of them.
That's what's going to warrant discussion. Yeah, but, you know, we had to allocate and.
No, no, I, I, I just want to make sure.
Yep. And just so everybody remembers too, the, it's a one point seven million for the ARP and then seven hundred, roughly seven hundred thousand. The total, the total allotted amount that he signed was granted.
Any other, other questions, comments?
We'll keep bringing that back and obviously it's going to, we're already, our house is already gearing up for. The budget season already and getting ready to roll the information out to principals in early October. So.
Yeah, okay.
Stay tuned.
All right. So we'll move on to the next item, which is for discussion. This is the Board of Ed Cave Liaison and. Brought to our attention, Kate actually raised it, raised it that. Cave suggests or is, is open to have a board. Appoint a cave liaison who basically has responsibility to receive information from cave. Probably very similar to the packets of information that, that Jeff, you, you received from cave as well. And to basically. Be up on all things that are happening at the cave level and then report and back to the board. On what's happening in cave, which is not, is good, I, you know, is a good idea. We've never done, I don't remember in our past, we've never really officially done this. Not, no. She was on the board. She was on board directors, but we never done, but I, I don't. Area director, right. But anyway, but I, I certainly if, if there are individuals that are interested in being the cave liaison, I, I see it only as a positive. To happen. I don't have any issues with that. The cave recommends that the liaison is appointed by each board chair. And, and then there's a listing of the responsibilities. So I marked it, you know, just for discussion, I want people to be aware of it, but if people are interested in. Being considered to, to be the representative, just shoot me an email or something, raise your hand. And I will throw you the dartboard and. Yeah, that's, that's great.
The number of people that Jamie knew like over the years was unbelievable. So how, you know, it's not a formal process.
Well, that's nice. That's very nice. So if people are interested, just raise your hand, I will appoint. And then I would think that this would be something that annually would be done. So when the new board is formed in December. And a new board chair is, is put in place, then we will go through the same process of appointing. These types of positions represented. So, and I think it's great to have people rotate through these things too, because it's just a good, good opportunity. So. But anyway, I think that's, that's great. So well, I'll, I'll be accepting the recommendation.
I'd add my voice to Kate, because of her work, so many reasons that she would be an excellent candidate for the K board.
Great. That's good, good. Okay. Okay, so we can.
So just, you're going to have board members email.
Anybody who's interested. Send an email and then I will make the, make the selection for the remainder of this year and. And then that will continue on. All right. So moving on here. So this next item under instruction is discussion for the opening of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Yeah, so it's been a very, very solid open. We're open, which is great. But we're, no, we're, we're off to a good start. Obviously, there's still cases. You all are aware how we've kind of modified rather than, you know, the constant call out. A lot of parents and people thank. People are sick of hearing that call at four o'clock. So it's just a one-shot deal if we have a case. But anybody can go on the website at any time, you can check cases. We update that spreadsheet daily and weekly. So you can see the, the COVID cases and obviously we're, we're still following all of the other, the other protocols. Vaccination, some real great numbers on vaccinations we're collecting, we've been collecting, we're just about done. So our total. Staff that are vaccinated is at five hundred and forty-five staff members. Total staff not vaccinated, nineteen, and total staff not submitted. We're still working on twenty-three capable. So that's some significantly high very vaccination numbers, which is really, really good. So I didn't think it was going to be that high. So I'm very, very happy with, with that. Our next step, once we get the last group of these twenty-three finalized. Whether vaccinated or not, this week we'll be starting to work with the unvaccinated folks on that process. And we should have that rolled out ready for the end of the.
So for unvaccinated, then they would have weekly testing.
Exactly. Yes. Yep. And we're trying to determine the day, thinking maybe Wednesday, you know, Kim Davis and I were talking about this today.
Now, have you set up for your, what's that going to look like? Are they going to be sent to a specific spot like a CVS? Or are they going to be doing it onsite and sending it in?
Up to them. They need to find, we'll give them the day and then folks need to go find the location and test it. We'll try and help out with that. There's some clinics, Ledge Light runs some clinics. That's some free clinics on different days. I don't know specifically the days. I think I heard Friday and Tuesday, but I'm not sure about that.
And then how does the results get?
They have to collect the results and then bring, submit the results weekly. So that's what I think in Wednesday, because then you have two days, they could submit the result on Friday. And ready to go for the next week, rather than if we, this, we're going back and forth, we did it on Friday and if somebody didn't get the results back by Monday morning, then they can't come to work. To start until they get the results. We're trying to make this as easy as a process as possible. So that's why I'm kind of leaning towards maybe Wednesday. For a collection of that information with what will be, you know, anywhere between, you know, twenty to thirty-five people. Eric and Kate, yeah.
What are we doing? Who's managing the contact tracing? So are we, because I went back and forth last year. So are we. Managing that? Do we have to?
The nurses are involved in it. On the weekends, we still are using, because we've had some cases on the weekends. Andrew Scott has helped us out with the calls, the quarantine calls. So basically the same process as last year. Other than, you know, you get the vaccination component factored in now. We have to ask that question to kids.
And so if, and if a student is vaccinated and is on the contact trace list, but does not show symptoms, they're still. Able to come. And how do we, do they have to show proof of vaccine?
We just talked about that triple A. Yeah, because we haven't had a, a situation yet with, because all of our cases have been elementary, I suppose. We're going to talk about that. With the nurse, whether or not we, we ask them, but do we have the student actually show like their backs, proof of vaccination? So a lot of times we're talking with parents too, especially if it's a seventh grader or middle school, you know, middle school student, sixth or seventh grader. But eighth grader. So we're going to have to.
Is there a guideline for the state on that by chance?
Not as to, you know, actually showing the proof of it, but it would make sense. To, to do it that way, just so you have absolute proof and you know, and there's a record of it. So we can never say that, you know, we didn't do it. So it would make the most sense to do it that way. Jamie, leave that question.
Yeah.
So I have heard from Waterford parents and I don't know if we're doing the same thing, but. So I have a Waterford parent who their kid went homesick from school. With a cold. That student's not allowed back until they come back with a negative COVID test. Are we doing that?
That's correct.
No matter what, you're out of school for.
It's recommended through Ledge Light's flow chart to get, to go get tested.
So if you have a stomach bug, you can't come back to school without a COVID test?
If that's one of the, I believe that's one of the symptoms of, of COVID.
From working with the nurses, the other thing is too, that if you end up at the doctor and say you have strep throat, if you have something, the doctor diagnoses you with something else. Then you don't need the negative.
Okay, so.
With a different diagnosis.
Right. So it's kind of either or.
So it's not even, I, I, I. I guess I'm just trying to figure it out because not, not everything that you have out there is COVID.
Right, that's right.
Like I went to the doctor the other day and she goes, do you have sore muscles? I'm like, yes. Do your muscles hurt? Yes. She's looking at me like she's scared and I'm like, I'm over forty. Overweight. I hurt to get out of bed. So I, I guess I just don't know what's too much.
I know. I guess, you know, we're trying to continue to follow the advice as we've done.
I mean, I'm all about being safe. Trust me, my daughter is going to Disney and I'm not letting her home until she's quarantined out of that and given me back. Test, but she's also going to Disney. So that's a different story, but if I have allergies and I'm sneezing and coughing.
And what's interesting, per, per Ledge Light's flow chart, correct me if I'm wrong, we just looked at this today, where even if you have a vaccinated person that's showing symptoms. They still need to quarantine for ten days, even if they're feeling better. They still need to quarantine. So it's, it's, it's a lot.
Lee had a, I have a question and then Kate.
Yeah. Well, first I just wanted to say, I think the new communication system is like spot on. It's such a good upgrade from. What we were doing last year. So kudos on that. And then curious to see if we've had any early issues around finding subs. Because I know that that has been like a very hot topic across.
And that's, that's part of this, this update with even staffing positions. Yeah, we're having a hard time, tele services, music is still struggling with. Finding people as, as we still have, you know, we know in Jim's update, she shared some numbers Friday of how many. Still have available. It's just people aren't there. The well is, is dry. We have tried everything under the sun. To search for, for folks, they're not coming forward anymore. So it's getting harder as the years starting to progress.
So starting to think there are any like potential contingency plans as we're approaching months where it's probably not.
Especially with long-term subs and trying to think outside the box. And, you know, we've, we've done past working with the union on, you know, I think. To just pick up, you know, another class and, you know, outside on top of their one point away. It's not ideal at all and we don't want to go down that road. We have done it again in the past, but it's a last resort. So. You know, I will say we're, we're in better shape than other districts, districts, which is good, especially with our busing. Because our staffing has been okay there. I'm hearing horror stories out there, but we, we are still struggling. So.
Two things, are the unvaccinated, or maybe they don't need to, so I don't know. Are they telling you why or is it medical conditions or?
It doesn't, really doesn't matter because they have to test anyways, whether it's religious, whether it's medical. So we really don't need to know.
Okay. And then the second is that, you know, the report of college, a hundred and eighty kids at college who were vaccinated. They contract COVID. So, you know, it's out there, we're vulnerable. So, but yeah.
Why was it up that high?
So it's, it's real, you know. But at least if we're vaccinated, then we will get it still. So.
Right. Yep, yep, correct. Yeah, no, no, no problem. So that's, that, that's where again, that's where we're at though, where we, we're in and kids are happy to be in. So we're going to continue going along and though we're excited for the year to be underway.
Okay, so. All right, everybody good? All right, let's move on to our last item under, and it's under policy and that's a first review of. Of a success revision of policy thirty-three twenty purchasing procedures. Jamie, do you have anything you want to say about?
I don't. This is a policy that's being put together and reviewed because of. Mariana, correct me if I'm wrong, the audit that came through, we are missing some components that should be in there. Or federal reporting for certain purposes. So this is a fix on that.
So please take a look at it. Any, any comments or questions you have, pass them to Jeff and.
Just one very quick question. Under intent, is that a type, there should be another sentence for that because it doesn't, any vendor, so it begins.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, the very first.
Let me go back and. It just, it just starts kind of weird. I don't know that there was like a preceding sentence that.
It probably got hacked when it got moved over.
See, without that in there, it's hard to figure out like what the changes are.
It's, I can go back and look at it. We had a policy meeting on it. So.
Yeah, we'll look at that. Excellent. Okay, good.
Hey, that brings us to administration reports. Jeff?
A couple of quick pieces. I know we've had a long meeting. I first, I had the pleasure of having a intern, oh ninety-three intern with me again this year. Eric Petroulis is here. He's, welcome Eric. We're glad you're part of the district this year. We're excited to have you joining us in all of our activities. So. Eric, you just want to kind of mention where, what district you're from and.
Currently the Director of Human Services for Aces. In their third, my third year at this point. And we've seen some SIMs tomorrow and back, Wednesday, the back school event. As we ready to support launching the new IP system that's going to be coming up. So if there's something you'll be hearing about.
Excited to have you, Eric.
Had a student note, just wanted to make mention Rene Broder. She had received the EL Teacher's Years of Service Scholarship at the end of last year. So she wrote a nice note to the board event. So I'll just kind of pass that around and take a look at that. It was nice of her to, to write a note. Next week, it was in my Friday update about our mental health and suicide awareness activities that are going on. We've been. Working diligently with Aunt Dagle and the Dagle Foundation, Dave Putt, New Services Johnson, part of that, some of those conversations. We're excited. A lot of activities planned for, for next week across, across the town and across the schools, starting off with the Bright Music Festival and a walk. On Sunday morning.
Are we going to try to do the mental health week again since COVID crashed it last year?
But that, that's what this, this.
We're going to make it now.
Yes, that's right. But it's September is suicide awareness month and October is mental health awareness month. Yeah, so we've got some speakers next week during the day. Yep, we get John Morello coming. Yeah, he's going to talk with kids in the morning. We're splitting that with Waterford. So he'll be in Waterford for a part of the morning and with us, with our students. We're working it out. So just senior class, yeah, correct, is going to be in the auditorium with him and then we're going to zoom it into. Into the advisory classes for everybody else. So that, that's. So we're excited about those, those activities occurring next week. And finally, we're still waiting on the final course. You should have next week, the pool roof as well as additional information on the baseball field. So stay tuned. And then just the Board of Ed retreat. Lastly, sorry, Jamie. The Board of Ed retreat. Lastly, didn't we poll, we didn't have enough participation. So we're looking at that for early October. And probably just using a board meeting, shorten a board meeting and while everybody's here to jump into a retreat and just kind of thought. Save it for everybody as well. So I'm working with Jessica Ritter. I'm trying to get a date that aligns with our board meeting in October. Good. Okay.
With everything going on, are we still going to have our? Aspect presentation.
We're going to talk, yeah, we're bringing the, all the improvement plans. We're planning on next. We're gonna talk, yeah, we're bringing the, all the improvement plans, we're planning on next meeting, I'll talk about the improvement plans and then we can talk further about, we're still waiting to try and dive in deeper with the S, the SBA, you know, those, we have the individual student.
There's spa now, not stack, S back. I can't even say SBA, it's spa.
Stay tuned.
It's a better word with a P in it.
That's it for, that's it for me.
Okay, our assistant superintendent.
Hi, yeah, so, well, I can pick up with regards to the SBA, our individual student reports are in, be working with the building administration this week to pick a date that those will be mailed home, a couple of letters from me. And then we're still continuing to look at some of the macro data that's come, you know, from the state and trends that we're seeing. But would really like to dive in a little bit further to look comparatively at cohorts in the past and the state's done a significant amount of analysis and I'm, would really like to try to do the same type of analysis here in Eastline that makes sense for us and the work that we're doing, so more to come on that. And also the title, Wanted to Grants have been open for application, so I've been working with Mariana on talking about how those grants have been utilized in the past and so I'll be working on submitting those between now and probably mid-October. When, one thing I'm really excited about is I've, I've started my, my building-based visits with the building administration. So I had my first one with Deb Kelly the other day, had the pleasure of visiting the science department, which was just really awesome to be back in buildings and in classrooms and seeing the teaching and learning process happen live in front of us more traditionally than we've seen in the past, obviously with COVID. And part of those meetings are really to help calibrate what we're seeing in the classroom and then talk about, you know, what that might need for instructional leadership at the building level. So I think I'm with Danielle maybe tomorrow, yeah, so I'm trying to do that as a start a couple of times a month. And then we'll see where that takes us. Let's see. I mentioned in the weekly update that we're starting our committee meeting, so tomorrow will be our first meeting with the professional development evaluation committee. The purpose of this committee, tomorrow we'll look at some of the state flexibilities that are coming through with regards to the evaluation process for teachers. So we'll look at those evaluations and get some consensus on whether or not we want to move forward with the, with the state flexibilities for the upcoming school year. We'll do that tomorrow, and then I have my curriculum fellow and curriculum instructional leader meetings scheduled from, for the rest of the year, we'll be coming together at least once a month. And part of our, part of one of our initial tasks will be really to have our curriculum accessible in electronic format for all members internally to start and then obviously providing an opportunity for some of that curriculum to be available for our parent community. Yeah, so a quick question on the PD and actually now the curriculum, sorry, no, that's fine. Are you as a committee going to be looking at the suggestions that were made inside of this equity audit? For PD and curriculum? Well, the, the, yes, of course, for both. So the professional development evaluation committee will work with a different committee on, on how we'll focus on professional development this year. Jeff and I already talked about how to use some of our half days and then our full day in March for an opportunity to dive a little bit deeper into the recommendations that the equity. There were a bunch of them in there, curriculum and PD, so. And then even, even the summer when we did some of our curriculum work, we had a team attend a curriculum camp and many of the sessions were around addressing equity through the curriculum writing process. So we already have a committee who's been looking at that and even looking at the way our curriculum documents are organized so that we explicitly make those connections through the curriculum writing process, thank you, yeah.
Well, I really appreciate Jamie asking that question and that was exactly where I was wanting to go to, but you did not mention non-certified staff, if that's included in your scope and vision of what you're looking at, how you're gonna evaluate.
Yeah, we'll be looking at the evaluation process for non-certified staff as well.
But for their PD, for their development, is there, are they given that opportunity, I guess, I don't really know.
Yep, so the non-certified staff have an opportunity to attend or are part, have those, that time to promote, to engage in professional development. What's really exciting this year is we were creating an electronic hub called the Teaching and Learning Room, which is ultimately an area where any member of our learning community can go, including non-certified staff and engage in professional learning in our core focus areas, so that's S E L, D E I, engagement and communication and blended learning. So that was actually the last thing I was gonna record out. It's, that's totally fine. So we are going to be releasing the learning hub October eighth, which is our first half day. So part of that will be to introduce the hub to the members of our learning community and then provide them with some opportunity to dive in and explore. But ultimately, what had come out of the work that Amy led last year through PDEF was that they wanted an opportunity to do some choice-based learning, so, but we also wanted to provide, ensure that our staff were provided with high-quality resources. So this is a great opportunity to post high-quality resources, but also provide folks to sort of enter in where they feel as though they need to focus on for the year. Yeah.
Will board members have access to that?
Yeah, are you finished with your report? Or should I, or can I ask a question or where is?
I think we're good.
So I just wanted to ask, in this report that we got from the Equity Institute, it said something to the effect that grade-level teachers are not having opportunities to meet with other grade-level partners or peers. And I'm wondering why that doesn't happen, so if the Annecy Center can't meet with L O V D and Flanders, why if you're at that grade level teaching that? I don't understand, but maybe you're.
We've done that, yeah, which is, I don't know why that was, I saw that too Kate, and we have.
It didn't seem like us, but that's my mask.
Yeah, I don't know if that was.
So, yeah, and I'm continuing to learn how, what meeting structure has happened here in the past, but I think, I mean, and I would ask my, the principals out in the audience, I think every fourth Wednesday, the grade-level teachers come together virtually, so it could be that maybe they feel so that's just not enough time, like an hour a month is really not a lot of time, so we can explore further opportunities.
But there's stuff to prevent them to say, hey, let's go for a walk on the board block and talk about what we're doing.
Well, yeah, that's true.
I just didn't understand that, so I just wanted to.
Oh, very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mariana, anything?
I'm just really quick update on, on you and this, Anna and I are working with our trainer to set up the back end of our systems and that. When we start training staff, it'll be hopefully the way we want it and also need to make some adjustments. We are now looking at July first as a live date for our council letter and then we will start working
Wow.
And hopefully, I'd like to get people up by January, so we start a clean on the years around the show.
Three, yeah.
Yep, yep, so everything goes well, we're looking at July first, so really excited about that.
Excellent, 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 good. Okay, committee reports, I think we have a triple A committee. So, oh, we can defer that report to the next meeting, I guess, is there, was there anything, Jeff, you started, and Lisa?
To report out, so we had some guests present on some of the summer programming that we offer through the Summer Instructional Pathways Program and so we had Addie DeMares and who is the administrator at Coastal, but also was the serving administrator of the Summer Instructional Pathways Program this summer. Along with one of our new teachers, Heather Terrio, who is teaching grade three at Flanders, but also was a teacher providing intervention this summer, share some of their experiences with regards to the program, we looked at enrollment numbers and success rates. And then we had Andrea Scott here also talk about who's our new revenue program manager, talk about, you know, how we're celebrating the, you know, that our foreign aftercare programs are up and running again and looked at some of the enrollment numbers with regards to that.
One thing that the other board members may not have heard that kind of stuck out to me is, I was excited to hear that over, over half of the students who were identified needing some, some additional help in various areas were able to get into the program and, and see some success, so that was, that I thought was really nice to see. I was impressed that that many kids actually attended programs through the summer and made, made some good progress, so that was good to see. And also we got a report on the, the fall sports are all up and running and, and they're doing their best to allow spectators and doing the mask thing on the inside and, and trying to, trying to make sure all the kids are safe with the sports and, and that things are rolling, they're good too, so that was brought up at the meetings, girl. Perfect, perfect, okay, good, that's it for committee reports then. Board comments, future agenda topics, Jamie?
I have two. Before COVID, last twenty twenty, I have to go back, when we were doing our budgeting, we were, we had put together a sheet on parent spending versus school spending on sports. And I had asked for a analysis of arts and clubs, but with everything that happened, it got pushed. And I'm wondering if we can bring it back so we can show what the school spends on sports, arts and clubs and what parents spend on school arts and clubs. And what the difference is between sports and clubs and arts, because I know there's a difference and it's.
Between individual sports, you're saying?
And arts.
Yeah.
Like band, drama.
Yeah.
Drum line, all that kind of stuff. And then I wanted to say, because I don't know about the other schools, but the high school did their open house virtually last week. Little hiccup in the beginning, but it went great. I went to my daughters, all her little things, I was kind of sad to see not very many parents. There were a couple of classes I went to where I was the only parent. I told the teachers they didn't really have to give me their spiel, they just, we just had like a little conversation, which was nice, but it was kind of sad not to see a lot of parents in there, but I thought the beginning, you know, it was, it was great the way it was broken out, it gave everybody a Zoom room. They had their kid's schedules, I think that was, it was excellently planned out, I just was kind of sad that I didn't see more participation in it. But it was, it was great, the setup, the running, the time, the notice that you gave the parents that this was happening, that this was how it was gonna be broken out, it was great, I was just sad not to see more parents in there. And that's all I got.
Okay, great, anybody else?
I really appreciated Jeff, your, the greater detail in the report that you sent out, the weekly update. Helpful and nice to get that information. Back to the consent agenda, I'm wondering if we could have some of our reports like our FFO, triple A, our different committee reports as part of our meeting and then, and part of the consent agenda, even the minutes of the previous meeting. So then we could approve those and then pull it out as deemed necessary rather than going back and forth over the motion, the second, the discussion, unless there really needs to be, because I think a lot of it, if we're given the opportunity to read things, I think we can phone to the board meeting more prepared, having more action items, a better understanding for how to facilitate at a higher order level and not micromanaged, but to be a support. To continue to be ambassadors for the hard work that you're all.
Yep, okay, good, good suggestion. Anybody else? I just had one thing to share and that is I sat down this morning with Jackie and we started, we started pulling together the necessary paperwork and stuff for qualifying for cave recognition award for the board. Now, I don't know, sometimes I kind of wonder if we should be asking for it. But I think that, I think actually when I wrote, wrote some of the stuff that's occurred, board has done, I think that's, it's very warranted. And so I will be submitting that, we will be submitting that, the deadline is October first for the, for the paperwork, so. Hey, all right, everybody have it? Well, would anybody like to make a motion? Second? Second, Kate, second, all in favor? We are adjourned.